...of education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a community meeting. There are two opportunities for public participation during the meeting and comments are limited to three minutes per individual. Concerns will be referred to an administrator or to the interim superintendent for follow-up. The board will listen to comments but may not respond during the meeting. As a matter of fairness, speakers with complaints against individuals are asked not to mention persons by name. Complaints concerning employees should be brought to the attention of school principals or administrators. Please submit a comment request card immediately if you wish to address the board.
All right, we're gonna do the pledge of allegiance now. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My name is Yamanda Smith-Charles. I'm president of the Southfield Board of Education. And to my right...
I'm Daryl B. Jones, Plenary of Schoolwork.
Good evening again. I'm Leslie Love-Smith, Board Secretary.
Good evening, Charles Sings, Board Chairman.
Mike Coolwell, Board Trustee.
Teddy Robinson.
Ms. Rice, Board Trustee.
John Chalmers, Board Representative for Southfield Public Schools.
Shannara Williams, Board Representative for Southfield Regional Academy Campus.
Chief Hudson, Board Representative for University.
Derek Lopez, Intra-Superintendent.
Vicki Hall, Strategic Strategic Community Resources.
Halys Zosinski, Interim Associate Superintendent for Instructional Resources and School Performance.
Lenny Safriman, Director of Support Services.
Kate Dickovich, Associate Superintendent, Administrative Services.
Scott Toko, Director of Operations.
And with technical assistance, we're happy to have N1 Studios' Mike Madigan, Jeff Volka, and Marlena Giambo. Recording minutes is Ms. Nicole Christian. Item number two, we will entertain any board matters that folks might have. I did wanna reiterate, I know it'll be mentioned in the buzzy report, but just to, before you leave today, let's be mindful of the self-assessment. It's a plea and a request from Ms. Hill and obviously our students at buzzy. And the dates of that are the last week of January and the first two weeks of February. And then, like I said, there'll be more information forthcoming. I also wanna just make sure that, and again, these are things we'll reiterate, but just to remind us that things discussed in closed sessions are things to be discussed only in closed session. And we would hate for anything to be said outside of closed that could open one up to civil and criminal litigation. Other than that, does anyone have any board matters for this portion of the meeting? We do have an opportunity during the meeting as well. Ms. Charles, please go.
Well, many, I'm sorry. Good evening again. Just wanted to take a quick moment to mention that the month of January is for the Divine Nine organizations. Many of the members of the Divine Nine, which are the predominantly black serois fraternities, have many Founder's Days in January. I mention that because many of the administrators, the teachers, are members of said organizations. And a lot of them do a lot of community service in our district. And I just wanna say thank you to all those who are celebrating Founder's Days, and we still love and encourage your continued support in helping us move our district forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please don't forget the MLK celebration on the 19th.
Thank you. Ms. Rice?
That's just one item for now. The board action item from our previous special board meeting around the Assessment and Accountability Committee is today is the deadline that marks the input and feedback from the board on the accountability metrics, the recommended policy changes, as well as the district accountability system.
Did everyone get a chance to peruse that over the break? And did you wanna do that under information? Yep, okay. Excellent. Item number three on the agenda is student and staff recognition. Students from the Southfield Public Schools for the Arts and Technology recently produced and performed a play. I believe the students and their instructor are here to provide more information, perhaps?
Yes. So, Ms. Wilson and Principal DM Lacy and the students. And the play is off there. Please come forward and introduce your board members.
Hello, I'm Miles Dundee, the playwright and actor of the play More Than Human that took place on December 20th of 2017. This is my first time writing a play for my play production class that I have six-hour. It was a very, very, very fun experience. I had a lot of fun and I grew close to a lot of the individuals that you see standing up here from the play that I wrote. More Than Human is a story that talks about people who struggle with different issues and challenges in their lives, particularly high school teenagers. High school is one of the most critical points in a person's life, and it talks about the perspectives of a group of seven delinquent high school students who have all committed acts that set them up for expulsion. But as opposed to expelling them from the school, their principal decides to come up with an idea to have them create a community outreach project to help better their city as an alternative idea for what could happen with the students pending their expulsion. And what kind of happens with these characters is that they all kind of start out from these, you know, places where they don't really know each other very well, they would probably never have associated with each other on other terms, but they end up finding that they share a lot in common and they end up discovering a lot of things about themselves. A lot of revelations are made through their senior year, which is when the story takes place, the second semester of their senior year. And overall, they end up learning a lot of things about themselves and a lot of things about the world in general. The world can be a very, very scary place for anybody, and it especially likes to talk about minorities and people who don't really get as much recognition as they should but definitely deserve. And so, that is kind of what we are, what I ended up writing a play about and what we ended up talking about. If you'd like, we can perform a short scene from the play to kind of explain it.
Please.
This is a story, a story about stories, a story about trials and tribulations.
A story about these nerds right here.
A story about that nerd right there.
A story about friends who had absolutely no choice but to like each other yet hated each other at the same time. A story about things lost.
A story about things gained.
A story about loyalty to all the things that we are.
A story about loyalty to those who care about those things.
A story about facing your truth. A story about accepting your truth.
A story about the darkness and the light.
A story about reality.
Fantasy.
And the expansive area of blurred rainbows in between. A story about finding who you are.
A story about remembering who you are.
About trying to forget parts of who you are.
A story about knowing there is more to you than what they see.
What they feel, what they think.
And sometimes even what you think.
A story about being wrong.
And still being right.
A story about regret.
Release.
Rebirth.
This is a story about being human and all of the wonderful things that that means. This is a story in which we tell the incredible tale of us humans right here. This story just about sums up all the ways that we are spectacular and unique, all the ways that we are human and yet more than human as well. You may not know what that means, but pay attention. We're more than happy to tell you. We aren't asking you to like what we have to say. We aren't asking you to care. All we ask is that you listen. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time and listen to them, and they worked very, very hard and I'm really proud of them. So, what I will do is introduce each one. Ah, Alice Dundee, the record and right. Gabrielle James. Then we had Terrence, he played the role of Blue. Shannessa, he played the role of Silver. Shaunison, yeah, but he played the role of Green. And Asia, she played the role as Orange. Shanti played the role as Principal Black. Thank you very much, and we're working on our spring project. They've started.
Our spring project will be a musical.
Yeah.
So, Ms. Lacy, could you come to the mic, please? Because we talked about how poignant it was when I was there that evening, and what did you plan to do with these seven amazing students for the younger kids in the building?
We have so much talent at Southfield A&amp;T, and these young folk are going to present tomorrow, second hour, to the freshmen, so they can have an idea of what they can aspire to with what we have and what this district offers for them. So, we're excited about that. I think the freshmen are excited about it. So, if you'd like to see a little bit of all the entire presentation, second hour, come on.
Thank you. What about those of us who can't be there? Is there an option, recording option?
You know, I don't know, did we videotape?
It's recorded.
It has been recorded already from the first presentation.
It's recorded.
It is, it is awesome.
Can we run and shake it in the mic?
If you'd like to.
If you'd like to.
If you'd like to. If you'd like to. If you'd like to. If you'd like to. If you'd like to. If you'd like to. If you'd like to. If you'd like to. If you'd like to. If you'd like to. If you'd like to. If you'd like to. If you'd like to. If you'd like to. If you'd like to. If you'd like to. If you'd like to. If you'd like to. If you'd like to. If you'd like to. If you'd like to. If we could acknowledge our parents who made me in the audience with these very talented thespians. Parents are here, please stand, so we can be recognized. Thank you so much. Following that presentation, Ms. Dawn Finazzo has been selected as Southfield Public Schools' Teacher of the Month, and we have a very special video we'd like to share first.
This is Finazzo as a team player. She's really energetic. You can never tell if she's having a good day or a bad day.
She was a pretty good teacher.
When I think about the poster of all I really needed to know I learned in kindergarten, it reminds me of Dawn.
I describe Ms. Finazzo as a nice mate and a caring teacher.
She's like a friend. She does creative things.
I see Dawn as somebody who has a wonderful balance of a strong faith, a great sense of humor, and a lot of flexibility.
Ms. Finazzo is confident. She thinks like no one would ever think.
I believe that Kendrick has gained confidence in Ms. Finazzo's class. He's gained leadership, and he's very proud of the things that he does with Ms. Finazzo and his role in the classroom.
I like projects and math.
I feel like Mrs. Finazzo's strengths are being very knowledgeable about the age group that she works with. She not only is teaching them the fundamentals of reading and math and the structure in the classroom management of how to do school, they are having fun and they want to be here every day and they are learning. She really knows how to focus in on each student, and if they need specific needs out of the classroom, she is the one who will go find what they need or connect to the right people for help.
She helps the kindergarteners with their work, so that inspires me to help them more so I know how to care for people.
At any time, you can go in her classroom, and her students know what to do.
Like, she inspired me, 'cause when I grow up, I want to be a teacher like her. So, I found Dawn to green slay and stood enough to buy help in her class.
I teach because it's something I've wanted to do my whole life. I've been with Southfield, this is going on 34 years. I was a career professional for 20 of those years, and I've been a teacher for going in 14 years. Every day, I like to start fresh. We have a board that they can, they start out on green every day, and then they can go to yellow, which that means they need to think about their behavior or their actions. And then they can go to red, which means they really have to take thoughts and figure out what they're doing wrong and change the behavior. Every day, there are aha moments in kindergarten, because everything is so new and fresh for the children. If they know a little bit about it, then they're gonna learn more about it, and that's an aha moment for them. And if they know nothing about it, they learn something, and that's an aha moment. That's why I love teaching kindergarten. I've taught all the way up through fifth grade, but I enjoy kindergarten the most because everything is so new and fresh for them, and it makes me see it through their eyes, which then gets me excited for teaching and to see them learning, and I like to make them excited to learn and always want to learn. I think it's important for children to have a caring, compassionate teacher, because first of all, a lot of children don't have that at home. Even if they do, we all need to be cared for and loved and taken care of and everything. And if I can do that in conjunction with their parents, that's more than I could ever hope for. For those that don't have it at all, at least I know they're gonna get something from me. I thought it was a joke when I read my email that I was Teacher of the Month. My coworker came in and said, "Did you see your email?" And I said, "No," and I'm thinking I forgot a meeting or something. I was just overwhelmed. It's a wonderful surprise, and it just makes me feel very appreciated just to know that somebody did recognize me and that I am being recognized. I really appreciate that.
Mrs. Finazzo, Dawnie, which I call you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations on being the Teacher of the Month.
I did not know that you were going to receive a nomination for Teacher of the Month, but I am not surprised. It's been such a pleasure working with you.
Your personality inspires me to be a teacher someday.
You are truly deserving. Dawn, I am so excited that your, all your hard work has been noticed. You are a wonderful team player here at Stevenson.
Ms. Finazzo, I appreciate you. Every day I come to school, I look forward to seeing you.
Ms. Finazzo, you're a nice, caring teacher, and I love helping your kids with their math and math at my reset.
And I'm so thrilled and so proud of you.
I didn't say you was a great teacher of law. I wish I could stay in there so I can have one always.
Your efforts in the lives are so meaningful. Thank you so much.
Wow, that was quite surprising, but I am truly honored to receive this award. Every teacher deserves this award. Every teacher will tell you that in order to be successful, the people that surround you daily are just as important. Like my principal Sandy LaPriere and our secretaries, Mrs. Kilgore and Mrs. Foster, my teaching partners, all workers, past and present, these are the people that I can laugh and cry with, and they always listen to my funny kindergarten stories. It also takes involved parents like Mrs. Walker to trust you and share their child with you wholeheartedly, so I thank those parents. Each day begins at home with my loving and supportive husband, and he has to listen to my daily ups and downs, for always being there. I wanna thank my children, Nikki and Cory, and the rest of my family for your love and constant support. I need to especially thank my mother, who introduced me to Southfield Public Schools 34 years ago. She has always had faith in me and has encouraged me every step of the way. In fact, she flew up here from Florida in below zero weather to be here for me again. And last but not least, the good Lord guides me and gives me strength each and every day. So, these are the people that have helped shape me into the person and teacher that I am today. Thank you so much.
Remember the Stevenson family also stand up, 'cause we got...
Yes.
...the Stevenson family, Pastor Preston Bartoon, Stacey. and her mom and the twelve members. Thank you for sharing Dawn with us every day.
Absolutely. Just like to let some of that sink in. Item number four on the agenda, we are just humbly honored to recognize the National Congress of Black Women, Oakland County, who has donated $300 to the Southfield Public Schools Foundation, and the funds are designated to support academic achievement at MacArthur K-8 University. Trustee and Board Secretary Leslie Love-Smith has more information.
Let me turn on my mic. Actually, of my members, my chair and my vice chair are here, as well as our treasurer, if you all could come to the mic, and I also see the MacArthur, wait, what's it say? Ms. Gloucester is, is that right there? I thought I saw him. Oh, okay. If you all could come to the mic, and I'll let you speak about it.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Diana Pedler, and I'm the First Vice Chair of the National Congress of Black Women, and I just say, wow, how do you come behind the Teacher of the Month and such a phenomenal group of theater performers? And we're on the community service aspect of education, so to see some of the results is just so heartwarming. And anything that we can do as an organization, we want to try to do that. The Southfield Public Schools has been a partner of National Congress of Black Women since 2008, when we began doing mock elections with middle-school age students, and we will again be doing this this year, October 30th, 2018. We hope we can count on your support. We'll be there for you.
Good evening. I'm Patricia Garrett. I'm the Chairperson for the National Congress of Black Women, Oakland County Chapter. It's our pleasure to be able to give to the young ladies of the school district so that we can encourage them to be more active in their community and also to seek elective offices when they start working in the community. So, we thank you for letting us be able to present this to them. Thank you.
Zarek Lake, Principal, MacArthur K-8 University Academy. My partner, come on up, Ms. Angela Taylor-Gloster. I'm so excited, and thank you so much for the funds. I'm gonna let her explain how we will use them and what they will be used for. It's a great opportunity. Thank you.
First of all, I would like to say good evening to everyone, and secondly, I would like to thank the National Congress of Black Women for partnering with MacArthur. We're so honored that they are giving us this grant so that some of our young ladies can participate in a program called The Pretty Brown Girls. And The Pretty Brown Girls is a program that empowers young ladies to change the world, and it empowers young ladies to believe in themselves, that they're beautiful inside and out. So, they have made it possible for 35 young ladies to participate in this program, and it starts next week, and it will run for 18 weeks on Thursdays for an hour. And they will be mentored by individuals who will help them learn to believe in themselves and that they're beautiful. So, thank you very much, National Congress of Black Women.
Do you have a little chat?
Yeah, we can talk, we will answer.
Chapter for that wonderful gift, supporting academic achievement. That takes us right into item number five on the agenda, which is public participation. If you wish to address the board regarding a school-related issue that has not yet been resolved by school administrators, please submit a comment card immediately. Now, we are delighted to have our student board representatives, who are raring to report for us on their last 30 days over at their various schools. I wanna welcome Pete Hudson, John Charlie, and, oh, no, we have to sit away. Shannora, we wanna welcome Shannora Williams-Brown. And so, of course, I'll introduce you as your, in terms of being able to speak. So, let's start with, let's start with Mr. Charlie, Southfield High School for the Arts and Technology.
Hi, hi, good evening. My name is John Charlie, and along with me, Shannara Harper, we are the Board Representatives of Southfield A&amp;T. She's not able to be here with us today. On December 20th, Southfield A&amp;T hosted its lifting battle, which the students really enjoyed by standing the whole time and staying along and participating. A lot of students and teachers participated in it, and it was a really good way for us to go into our holiday break. As you heard earlier, on December 20th, the play production had put on their play card, More Than Human, and it was written and directed by students in Miles Dundee. During the holiday season, the Class of 2018 Board and some additional seniors adopted a family for Christmas and donated coats, hats, gloves, boots, and toys. The Board also donated 25 blankets to the Kennedy Learning Center. On the week of December 20th to the 22nd, student council had a holiday charity week. That week, they read to elementary kids at Adler Elementary School, made blankets for a local children's hospital, and did Wheels on Wheels. On January 16th, the National Honor Society will be hosting Tudo Palooza, which is tutoring for the midterm exams that's happening on... Thank you.
Thank you very much, John. Next, we have Shonora Williams from the Southfield Regional Academic Campus.
Good evening and Happy New Year, board members, interim superintendent, Mr. Derek Lopez, central office staff and administrators, Southfield School staff, parents, students, and guests. My name is Shonora Williams Brown, the student board member representative from Southfield Regional Academic Campus. Here's what's going on at Southfield Regional. Southfield Regional was selected to participate in the Strive for a Safer Drive campaign for the current school year. We were awarded one thousand dollars to develop and implement a student-led, peer-to-peer traffic safety awareness campaign. Drive for a Safer Drive is a team driving initiative aimed at reducing serious traffic crashes, injuries, and fatalities among Michigan's most inexperienced drivers teams. It is presented by Four Driving Skills for Life and the Michigan Office of Highway Safety Planning. All high schools are eligible to apply. Twelve young ladies from Southfield Regional are participating in the Women of Tomorrow Mentorship Program. We have three mentors that be with the young ladies once a month. The mentors are career women who volunteer to work with the young ladies. Our mentors this school year have careers in the field of human services. For the month of December, the young ladies made holiday cards that were given to the residents of the Haven of Pontiac, which is a shelter for which those victims of domestic violence could attend. Over the holiday break, five students from Southfield Regional participated in the Business Professionals of America Workplace Skills Assessment Program. We'd like to recognize Daria Boney, Frances Mercedes, Jello Nicholson, Taiwan Griffin, and Frederick Johnson, and sponsor Mrs. Brown Perkins. Our students prepared and competed in contests in five assessment areas, including finances, business administration, management, and information systems, digital communication and design, and management, marketing, and communication. Our honor roll students and other selected students will be in attendance at the Little Seaters Arena on January fifteenth, as the Detroit Pistons take on the Charlotte Hornets. Several of our students will be participating in the Martin Luther King Jr. Peace Walk Celebration. Our seniors will be participating in a financial aid workshop that will be presented by our counselors. Our annual college fair will take place on Wednesday, January thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. I would like to thank Mr. Easter for giving me the opportunity to serve on this board as a student board representative for Southfield Regional Academic Campus. Thank you.
And Ms. Williams Brown was filling in for Jubilee today, so great job for your first time as well.
Thank you.
And following Ms. Williams Brown, Mr. Keith Hudson, University High School Academy.
Good evening. My name is Keith Hudson. I'm the student board representative for University High School Academy. This week, our student congress is hosting a canned food drive to benefit Gleaners Food Bank. In order to give back to the community, U students will be donating canned food items for their seminar classes. Canned tuna, salmon, chicken, peanut butter, spices, canned fruit, and canola or olive oil are all acceptable items. Midterms begin next week, Wednesday, January seventeenth through Friday, January nineteenth. This will be the first time at the U that all students are required to take a final exam for each class. We want our students to finish their semester strong and wish them the best of luck. On January sixteenth, there will be a student versus staff dodgeball game to close out the semester with a bang. On January twenty-sixth, UHSA's Got Talent Talent Show will be taking place. And on February second, university's first snow coming dance will also be taking place. And it will be the first time that our snow coming court will be elected. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hudson. Great job on that. And great job just in general. Y'all appreciate your presentation. All right. This takes us right on into the item number seven. As per usual, the student board representatives are welcome to exit in preparation for school And so, at the sake of reporting, the superintendent, Mr. Derek Lopez, please.
Good evening. This month, we honor and recognize the diligent work of school board members throughout the state of Michigan. The thorough work that our board members do in order to improve the quality of education for all students in Southfield is so appreciated. The Governor of Michigan has issued a resolution in honor of board members, and this appreciation month, so I'm going to read that resolution at this time. Certificate of Proclamation from the State of Michigan. On behalf of the people of Michigan, I, Rick Snyder, Governor of Michigan, hereby proclaim January two thousand eighteen Local School Board Recognition Month. Whereas Michigan is home to more than six hundred school boards of education, their work towards the lives of Michigan students through education and directly influence instruction in Michigan's public schools, and whereas Article Eight, Section Two of the Constitution of nineteen sixty-three states that providing for the education of Michigan's children is a critical duty of state government, and whereas local school board members are exceptional men and women who have committed themselves to this duty by governing school districts and advancing student achievement in the schools and communities in which they live and serve, and whereas during this month, we join with the Michigan Association of School Boards, Michigan Department of Education, local school districts, and community organizations to recognize and raise awareness of the countless efforts and contributions of local school boards and school board members throughout Michigan, now therefore, I, Rick Snyder, Governor of Michigan, hereby proclaim January two thousand eighteen as Local School Board Recognition Month in Michigan. And it's signed by the governor, and so I will be presenting to each of our board members a proclamation itself and certificate. So Board President Yolanda Charles. Board Vice President Gerald Johnson. Board Trustee Baker Robinson.
Well, it only took the last year of the last term. Thank you. Thank you.
And with that, I'll go and direct you to report seven members of the cabinet, Piki Hall, Associate Superintendent Fiona Reese.
Great, thank you. Good evening, board members. There will be a negotiations update and a closed session at the end of this meeting.
Good evening.
And there is no personal report.
No, thank you.
Good evening, board members and community. I have three updates for this evening. The first is the curriculum and instruction update. Our next HDPD day is Wednesday, January thirty-first in the afternoon, so that's a half-day for students and staff who will be working around the district during the afternoon. During this session, we will be getting the series on best practices for the instructional shifts that are part of the curriculum framework. The curriculum team is continuing to review the frameworks that have been developed so far and begun formalizing some of those in standard formats and so on for the review and discussion. The second update is around PE three oh six, the third-grade reading law. The data collection cycle for the winter has begun with the launch of our NWEA map assessment, beginning on January eighth, the first stage back. We will be testing at various grade levels, kindergarten through eighth grade until February ninth. The individual reading intervention plans for those kindergarten and first-grade students will then be updated by a deadline of March ninth. They have thirty days after the close of that cycle to update those reading plans. And then finally, the work on the blueprint that we are engaging in in the district. Our next meeting is Thursday, January eleventh, for the district committee meeting from twelve to four P.M. here in the board meeting. We will be working on reviewing the communications driver and also begin the visioning work for the intensive student support network. And that concludes my report. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, board members. We have a district team that is currently participating in IEP Coach-to-Coach training with Oakland Schools. So we have a team that will be out tomorrow participating in that training as we prepare for our upcoming professional learning around the district so that we can differentiate the instruction for our teams. We also have an upcoming parent advisory committee. We have some actual flyers in the foyer in terms of the next meeting, which is scheduled on Tuesday, January twenty-third. It will be at SEC, which is located on Mount Vernon, from six to eight, and we will have elections. I do have packed brochures that I'd like to pass down to you, and the birdhouses that were given to you were donated by retired science teacher from Southfield Public Schools. And we had our KLC team from New Horizon actually paint them and personalize them for you.
Wow. Thank you.
Yes, good evening and Happy New Year, one and all. I just would like to give an update from our financial report. Board members do have a copy in their packet. These are the results through December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. And they do reflect primarily the general fund. And they also are indicating the amended budget as approved by the board on December twelfth, two thousand seventeen. We are officially halfway through the fiscal year, which ends June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. You can see that the amended budget reflects the use of one point two million dollars of fund equity, with eighty-five million dollars of revenues coming in and eighty-six point three million dollars of expenditures, which would leave us with a projected fund equity at year-end of about thirteen point eight million. Through December, again, we are on a modified accrual basis, so a lot of our entries really take place towards the end of the year, which makes this a little difficult to monitor and measure, but we will be going into more depth at the board retreat on January twenty-seventh on some of the key areas. So just briefly then, revenues currently are at thirty-seven percent of budget. Again, most of that is the first round of taxes for summer levy. The other taxes were, the other half were levied in December and are due for the twenty-eighth of February. State aid, lingers, again, we only have three payments here of eleven, so really, we've only received about twenty-seven percent of our state aid to date. This kind of highlights the revenue end a little bit more closely, showing the thirty-one point seven nine that's been received to date. I've already spoken about the taxes, the state aid. Oakland Schools, the primary, that comes from two sources, our PAT money for special ed. We've received one of four payments. The other payment came in towards the end of December, but had not yet been posted. And then our Medicaid money, we do not see to year-end. On the expenditure side, we have spent, actually in cash, we see that on our disbursement reports, which are also contained in your board agenda or the consent agenda. We've spent about, as I said, twenty-nine, forty-nine million dollars, and this is just the breakdown as far as the areas are concerned. Again, timing is a big impact on this, and we will delve into that a lot closer when we meet again. But overall, the amended budget is reflective of where we are projecting our year-end funding. Are there any questions about the general fund?
I was going to just make a comment for the good of the public, which is that it's a good reminder that funds don't just come to Southfield Public Schools on July first, and then you figure out how you're going to spend it through the rest of the year. Now, they need to nail it out, as you stated, with regards to Medicaid, things like that, our reimbursements. So just wanting our community to just be reminded of how school funding is in the state of Michigan.
Which, if I could just piggyback on it very briefly, cash flow is a totally separate piece to the budget itself, but it is really the reason why fund equity is so critical, so that the district does not have to borrow money while they're waiting for state aid to come in. Thank you.
Mr. Turner?
Good evening, board. Today, at two o'clock, the bid process ended for the football fields renovations at Southfield A&amp;T. There were three proposals included in the bid. Proposal A was site work, which included removal of the old turf, disposal of that turf, and to build three concrete pads for the bleachers around the football, or the baseball field. Proposal B, there was three bidders for the site work, which was proposal A. Proposal B was the synthetic turf, the actual price of the turf to install. There was five bidders involved in that. Proposal C was for the bleachers, the three bleacher structures that will be located on the baseball fields. Mr. Bruce Lemmons is here from Foresight Design, who is assisting us with the bid process and the process as we move forward with the renovation. He will talk more into detail regarding the dollar amounts that are associated with the bid and the recommendation, regarding the recommendation for the board.
So, board members, you actually have the bid dollar recommendation, of course, I informed you, as well as behind, that you have each of the bidders in the various areas that have been identified on the front. And Mr. Lemons is going to go through the recommendation for Foresight, who is the manager that we actually secured via board action several months ago regarding the situation.
Good evening. It was a very active bidding session. As Scott told you, we had ten bidders, three bid on proposal A, and proposal A not only included the removal of the synthetic turf, but it also includes some repair. There's a sinkhole occurring out near the one D zone. We also have a contractor who's got to prep this, the grate that's out there, the stone. You've got to take some of it out, and you've got to put some in, because you also elected to have a shock pad put in underneath the synthetic turf. Now, the shock pad will add shock value, you know, when an athlete hits the ground. And it's not just football, it's for soccer, lacrosse, you know, all sorts of athletes. So we got bids from the contractors to put in the pad, also to do the removal. And then we had five bidders submitting bids for the synthetic turf, and they were very close. And before I came to the meeting tonight, I was at my office looking at proposals, and I realized that the low bidder actually provided a voluntary alternate to deduct twenty-six thousand dollars. It's not reflected here, but we will make sure that you realize that that cost savings. The reason for this is we had a base bid for the synthetic turf to be two and a quarter inches long, and then the infill that goes in. Because you've elected to go with this shock pad, we can reduce the fiber, we can reduce the infill. You still end up with the same face weight on the carpet, it's just that you reduce some of the manufacturing and the installation costs, and that's that twenty-six thousand dollars.
Mr. Lemons, could you talk really quickly about the value of that shock pad and the safety of athletes with that shock pad?
Sure. It's very difficult to not read any sort of news account these days without hearing about CTE and somebody being, you know, hurt. This shock pad...
He's gotta take some of it out, he's gotta put some in, because you also elected to have a shock pad put in underneath the synthetic turf. Now, the shock pad will add shock value, you know, when an athlete hits the ground. And it's not just football, it's for soccer, lacrosse, you know, all sorts of athletes. So we got bids from the contractors to put in the pad, also to do the removal. And then we had five bidders submitting bids for the synthetic turf, and they were very close. And before I came to the meeting tonight, I was at my office looking at proposals, and I realized that the low bidder actually provided a voluntary alternate to deduct $26,000. It's not reflected here, but we will make sure that you realize that that cost savings. The reason for this is we had a base bid for the synthetic turf to be two and a quarter inches long, and then the infill that goes in. Because you've elected to go with the shock pad, we can reduce the fiber, we can reduce the infill. You still end up with the same face weight on the carpet. It's just that you reduce some of the manufacturing and the installation costs, and that's that $26,000.
Mr. Lemons, could you talk really quickly about what the value of that shock pad and the safety of athletes with that shock pad would be?
Sure. It's very difficult to not read any sort of news account these days without hearing about CTE and somebody being, you know, hurt. This shock pad, when we first started designing athletic fields, we weren't really sure how the fields were going to react. And so there was what was called an E-layer, you know, placed underneath. Then we started measuring the G-max, which is the shock attenuation for these fields. And we started realizing that even over the eight, 10-year period, you were still being very safe. Well, they've lowered that value to 165, and all the fields still maintain that. But what we're finding with additional studies is that when people hit the ground, you have that shock attenuation, and it falls within acceptable ranges. But by adding the shock pad underneath, whether it's an E-layer or a pre-manufactured unit, it provides an enhanced safety. Now, the fields would always be safe. It's a requirement, otherwise you'd take them offline. But this just provides that additional insurance for the student athletes.
Okay.
And then we had three very close bidders for the bleacher bids, $19,016 and $16,500. So we will be, you know, awarding contracts to those different companies.
And so the total cost that has reflected, including your management of that process is what, sir?
Right now, it's projected to be $589,998. We originally projected at $580,000. There was a 10% contingency. You just don't know in construction what you may or may not run into. It's just a safeguard that everybody places. And that rose it up to $638,000. But again, with the contracted amounts that we, you know, realized here today, plus the $26,000, we did not put that in under $589. That will drop down, you know, to, I thought you might have, right?
563.
I know. 560, what did I say, 56007?
So the Board Act is the act of selling $650,000 for the Board Members there. That 10% contingency of $638,000 is what we're asking the Board to actually approve tonight, $638,000. The place over $650,000.
What's taking us, I guess I'm looking at the summary on the front page of your report, it takes the three proposals and gives us a total of $560. So what's the difference between the $560 to get up to the 10%?
My understanding is there's a 10% contingency as well. Go ahead, sir.
The contingency is, we carry that just in the event that, once they take out the synthetic turf and they're removing some material, like the sinkhole that we discovered out there. They anticipate that it might cost, let's say, $1,000 to fix it. But once they get there and they open it up and discover what's really going on, it might expand. I really don't anticipate anything like that happening. It's usually on site work projects where you have to do a lot of earthwork. This is a very simple project.
So it includes the 10% contingency?
10%. Well, I guess I'm thinking about, most of us watch the home shows, and if you uncover something, then you start to make those decisions. So what are you gonna do, you know, versus saying, okay, I've got this 10% contingency, let me just dip into that to fix?
So that's where Foresight comes in and Scott comes in with respect to monitoring what those decisions are over time. And if there is a significant increase, we of course would inform the Board that that did not cost what we anticipated, but it cost more. But just to, so we wouldn't have to stop a project in midstream, we would ask for the 10% contingency going forward and inform you if there are additional costs.
Okay, all that contingency also includes the fee for the mansion coming?
Couple of questions. One, I appreciate looking out for the district and going with the least amount for each bid. Sometimes the least amount isn't necessarily the best proposal. So is there something documented on why you chose the vendor that you chose? Is there an apples-to-apples comparison between the vendors that says, could I see a bit more of a variance? That they're not as close as, when they're doing $30,000, $40,000 price differences? So is one, are, was one vendor giving something that another one's not, was made the price go higher?
We did talk to the contractors on the site work package after the decision was received, because there was a discrepancy between the local site contractor and then the next bidder, just about double. But we talked to the contractor, and he has everything covered. So, and we have worked with him. He was the contractor that did the Novi project. He also did the installation of the turf at Central Michigan University several years ago. So he is experienced, and he didn't have any questions regarding, you know, the scope of work that we had. I did talk to the high bidder, who's also very experienced and local. And he said that, you know, he's just very busy right now. The time of year is gonna be very difficult, and this was just his price.
Are there any performance guarantees or warranties associated with the work?
There is on the synthetic turf. There's an eight-year warranty guarantee for that, for material and workmanship. For the site work, not so much. Bleachers, they're a one-year warranty on that.
Thank you.
Mr. Lopez, does this put us at close to the maximum amount for the capital fund?
We're still about $88,000, $80,000. Around that space, but I'll actually give you that actual number at the Board or two numbers.
Any further questions?
Thank you.
All right. That takes us right on into the Bussing Center for Early Childhood Education Director's Report and Financials. You should have the packet in your suitcase here for your review. Head Start numbers are fully enrolled at 160. Great Start Readiness Program enrollment of 53 students, of 64 slots, we have 53 students. And the waiting list for Head Start is 75, and they are three-year-olds. GSRP's waiting list is 10, and then we had a total of 32 drops. Average daily attendance, as we know, the mark is 85%. Head Start did 88.64% this month, and GSRP did 92.36. You can see the breakdown per room. And just want to, just really highlight, you know, all of the rooms look like they're doing fairly well. They're in the high 80s, into the high 80s. And we just wanna encourage the zebra and tiger room to step it up. The Child Adult Care Food Program Meal Serve for the month of December. Head Start breakfast, $450, lunch, $503, snacks, $417. You can see the Great Start numbers there. New hires, M. Boykins, and resignations, D. Maxwell, who was a building sub, and C. Allen, a teacher. You can see the health updates. We have five children who need vision screenings, five children who need hearing screenings, and 10 children who need dental screenings. There are 16 children with IEPs. And as we know, our threshold is 10% of the population has to have an IEP, and so we are at 16. And when we see Miss Hill there, is what maybe we can inquire if it's 15 for Head Start and we need one more. The Five-Year Strategic Plan Update, restructuring of a Head Start enrollment in GSRP. I know it is anticipated that we'll be having a good conversation about that at the retreat. For those of you who are at the governance training, and those who just have knowledge of Head Start in general, know that the enrollment zero to three is becoming a mandate. And so we just need to listen to Miss Hill and see what her recommendations are for that. As you can see, the new goal of converting those slots from birth to five. The self-assessment I mentioned earlier, and we are currently on track with all goals. I can tell you from experience, as I know others around the table, if we all do a little, it won't be overwhelming. And that way, when we have our reauthorization of that grant later this year, we'll really have good details to supply for the federal government. The environmental inspection at Bernie, we passed. So currently, we're just waiting on licensing. And once we receive that, the classroom at Bernie will open. And then you can just see the upcoming events, particularly the parent focus group meetings, January 24th, and empowerment through education and employment fair, January 17th, 3 to 5. They do have a new partner, Smiles on Wheels, sponsored by the Department of Human Services. On that second page, you can see that the financials for our grant this year, And we have spent of the federal portion, which is $1.35 million. We've spent 16% on the local match. We're just knocking it out of the water for the in-kind. Mr. Joyce will iterate that in just a moment, but I believe the new number is $79,000. Just rub up to those parents over there. And you can see the grand total. So just wanting to make sure we get that into the record.
Board President, any background on the drops?
I asked Mr. Joyce about that. I don't know if Ms. Robinson has something further, but oftentimes, it is transportation-related.
It is.
And then just being moved away. And we've talked about that other school north of Nine Mile, west of Telegraph.
Right.
So. But as I stated, Miss Hill, as I've asked the superintendent to include her in our retreat so that we can have some time to dig in. And that is all I have for the Bussing Report. Do you have a question?
Yeah, I'm glad to hear that Miss Hill will be joining us for the retreat. My concern was primarily around the GSRP enrollment and how that continues to be low. It seems that we have yet to max that number. And being very familiar with that program, we continue to be low, and that's really unusual for that type of program. And then also, if there are no objections, I would like us to explore, and even talk with Lena and Miss Hill for her expertise, a young fives program, especially as we are looking to incorporate the early learning in the buildings, Bernie and hopefully other buildings in the future. Looking at making sure we're bridging that gap, especially because the state continues to put those stipulations on when kids can start. And so just wanting to make sure that we're looking at all options, even if it's an investment, because we don't get funding for that type of program, but even if it's just an investment that we take on as a district.
So we are absolutely looking at that in our 4K5 buildings, and we'll talk more about that at the retreat as well, with hopefully a planning and announcement for the community with this cohort beginning in February, March. Because it really is important. We have a large number of young fives in our current classrooms across the district. And many of those youngsters, their parents were looking for alternatives for childcare, but they will not be ready for first grade. And those are conversations that we need to have explicitly with parents over time. It may be developmentally, because they're young and five, that they're not ready for first grade next year, but they need to go to a kindergarten center here. And that's okay, because they're not behind. And so actually, talking through that with parents, actually having a program to address the needs of those children is something that's actually on the radar, this is just me myself.
I just wanted to state that the last meeting she did state that she was working on that program. She's putting it all together, she will be talking to us at the retreat in detail on what's the plan she has for that.
And then also to just ask that, if you could take out some time, it's the first Monday, let's say, the first Monday, well, it kind of varies, but it's either the first Monday or the second Monday, but it's definitely before our Board Meeting where Policy Council Meeting meets. There's dollars attached to your attendance because your governance body, so it's like $65 an hour for your hour. And I think you just receive a lot and be able to kind of connect all of the dots as to why things are where they are. And I just ask Miss Hill, based on her budget, for those of us who do take those extra steps, if we could also participate in some of the conferences that are outside of the state of Michigan to advocate when that time comes. So, and might as well highlight that Mr. Joyce and Ms. Robinson are going to the Leadership Institute for Head Start, it's in Washington, DC. And I believe the dates are January 22nd through the 24th. So. Oh yeah, that's right. But Mr. Lopez is going as well, so thank you. I think that's the first. So, having said that?
No, I'm in. No, not now.
Okay. That leads us right on into our action items.
Oh, I, of course, I have to give it back on something other report. For the PD days, students on the present, the PD that have been attending.
We do actually have a number, we'll actually make that available for you at the Board Retreat as well. But we actually have attendance sheets for all of those PD days and the various sessions that are keeping back to the tent.
Another question around the form. At the schools, provide the parents, the forums at the school, provide the parents the information on the Chapter Three Reading Law, or K3, I should say. Have they been well within their parents' area receiving the information? And I'm only asking because I know the information's on the site, but it's imperative that the parents get the information within their forum or losing the site or hopefully getting into their home as well.
So can I ask, I'll wait to talk about the K1 meeting that we're gonna have.
So the initial round of those K1 meetings have been completed. They were completed before break. The attendance was fairly low. It tended to be maybe 15 families or less per building. We are talking about, not a second round of full-blown meetings, but a way to help engage parents in learning more about those literacy, early literacy strategies and what effective ways to accomplish that and do that in the various buildings would be. And so there is, I'm just trying to think. I believe this Friday is a literacy coach meeting with Cindy Watson. And that's one of the things they're talking about is, how do we continue to engage either parents that were there and want to know more, or parents who weren't able to attend the first round of meetings? How can they come back in and get that information?
I'm disappointed. I know we were usually typically able to catch a lot of the parents at a lot of the school functions. So we got low turnout at some of those forums. It was very advantageous for us to get that information from them at some of those school events. They come up for school events. So it's kind of a great way to capture them. And then the last one was around, or, I'm sorry, the PAC, is it only for Kindergarten Learning Center?
No, actually, the Parent Advisory Committee is a district-wide parent committee. So we had a number of parents that showed up at our first meeting back in November, and we're expecting a good turnout again.
I have another question, Mr. Will. Particularly because we're talking about, and putting a lot of focus, as we should be, around our early learning, our K3. I was, I spent some time over the summer just really kind of advocating and lancing particularly around kindergarten and making it mandatory. I don't know if many people still realize, but kindergarten is not mandatory in the state of Michigan. And so something that other districts do is maintain the, you know, their attendance and kind of really put a champion around, you know, the attendance of the students. What are we doing? And then partner, so there's other measures to partner with the families, just to make sure that the kids are getting there. What we're finding, or what I've found in the process, is that it's mainly the kindergarten and the first grade that have the lowest attendance. And so of course, there's that truancy piece and that accountability piece for parents at the first grade level because it's mandated, but not at kindergarten. And so I guess I'm just wondering, what are we doing here? And if we could, and not to be answered no, but maybe kind of dig into it later, if the other Board Members would agree, what measures are we putting in place to, even though, you know, the state is still kind of moving slow on making kindergarten, you know, mandatory, but making sure that we're keeping our, getting our kids here, that we're following up with our families, making sure that there's that accountability piece, that partnering piece that's needed? Because we can do the best strategies, have the best curriculum, have the best measures and all of that in place for that early learning, but if the kids are not here, they're still missing it. And then when we are held accountable for them later, it falls on us. But if they haven't gotten those building blocks, you know, early on, so. gotten those building blocks, you know, early on, so if that's something that the board would, you know, please do not feel valuable.
I would happen to agree. I know, trustee Robinson, that we kind of talked about getting our rate, but we haven't even touched upon the attendance rate. So perhaps it might be something that we might want to consider as part of our accountability metrics, to at least help us put some efforts behind pushing for a better attendance rate.
So that is a part of the intensive student support network. So one of the big, one of the big things that happens in, because kindergarten is not mandatory in most states, is that parents, kids, a child's attendance is dependent upon the bottom of the parents. There is no accountability behind it. So oftentimes, children are not attending because parents are experiencing difficulties or challenges in their own lives. And so that intensive student support network is designed to figure out what are those barriers to get in there, those children to school, particularly those of a younger age. And then it repeats itself in the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, when kids come to school of their own choice, and parents are leading to their own volition. And so there is a bookend of challenges with attendance with children. One is based upon parent challenges, and the other one is based upon students and their interests. And so that's part of that intensive student support network that we'll be talking about in the board.
Trustee, Ms.'s comment intrigued me in one area, which is how many numbers of students, maybe some data could be collected, just how many students enter our first grades without having gone to kindergarten. This is a reliable moment for me.
That question was asked to me, and I could not respond to it, you know, with accuracy. And I really, you know, hate that I was unable to, but I was challenged with that question. And I think that that was even, that that even came about, where it was like, well, how many kindergarteners are not attending? That's not. It's enough, and maybe not in this district, but definitely in other districts.
So, yeah. Thank you, Ms. Luxman and Ms. Rice, for both your comments. All right. I would like a motion to open and approve the minutes from December eleventh, twelfth, and nineteenth. If I could.
I move and approve opening the minutes from December eleventh, twelfth, and nineteenth, with any necessary changes or corrections.
Ms. Rice.
One change requested. Page six, recommend replacing, requesting the committee on the assessment accountability scheduled date to meet with the editor superintendent on December nineteenth, to replace with request the editor superintendent to provide input on the accountability metric at the December nineteenth board meeting. And they communicated that the assessment accountability committee was ready to provide a report out at the meeting on December nineteenth.
You said that was on page six?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Charles. I think, who supported that? You know, that's the vote. Yes. Trustee Joyce? Myself, yes. Trustee Hicks?
Yes.
Trustee Paul?
Yes.
Trustee Rice?
Yes.
And Ms.? Thank you. Can I have a motion to open, to open and approve report fifty-six thirty-five seeking fund resolution, second reading?
A move that we open and approve report fifty-six thirty-five seeking fund resolution, second reading, and approve.
You support it? Do you need to open?
So good evening. So thank you, board members. At this point in time, as was reported at our August twenty-sixth retreat, the district has a hundred and seven million dollars in deferred maintenance. And so the call is that we can actually go to the voters in the month of May and ask for a sinking fund that is not a net increase to the tax rolls, but rather is simply because we actually refinanced the bonds last year, there is actually going to be a diminution in the tax liability for that debt service, and we want to have a sinking fund equal to, or equivalent to, the amounts of money that we're actually using tax rate based upon the debt millage refinancing. And so just reading a portion of the resolution for approving the sinking fund millage that has been moved and supported this evening. At the regular board meeting of the board, meeting of the Board of Education of Southfield Public Schools, County of Oakland, Michigan, the school district held, and the school district on the ninth day of January twenty-eighteen, seven PM, prevailing Eastern Time, a few preamble, whereas the school district has determined that in order to improve, repair, and secure facilities, and to purchase technology, it is necessary to ask the voters to authorize the school district to levy a sinking fund millage of point seven mills annually for a period of ten years from twenty-eighteen to twenty-twenty-seven inclusive. And whereas the school district desires to submit a sinking fund millage proposal to the voters at a special election, special school election, excuse me, to be held on May eighth, twenty-eighteen. Therefore, it is resolved by the Board of Education of the Southfield Public Schools, County of Oakland, Michigan, that the sinking fund, one, the sinking fund millage proposal is hereby approved, two, the board secretary superintendent designated is authorized to certify the proposal to the school district's election coordinator not later than four PM local time on February thirteen, twenty-eleven. Three, the board secretary superintendent or designated is further authorized to take any and all action required under Michigan election law regarding the school district's school, special school election, and for all resolutions and parts of resolutions, in sofar as their conflict with the provisions of this resolution are hereby rescinded. Let's ask them for a vote of the board and a signature if adopted and a certification by the secretary.
Thank you.
Trustee provides some information that kind of speaks to how the community's taxes would have to raise, given that this was something that was already considered as part of the millage.
Yes, so. So I will, absolutely. And so we will actually be going to various meeting groups as well as explaining this. This past year, the district refinanced our debt finance village through our bonds. And with that, that will result in a savings to the taxpayer, equivalent to the point seven mills, or one point seven million dollars or thereabouts for the next ten years with respect to sinking fund dollars. That diminution in their tax roll is what we're asking for with respect to the sinking fund, so that there is not a net increase overall for the taxpayer in Southfield to support our, our infrastructure in Southfield, to ensure that our schools are maintained well and safe for our students. Would that answer your question?
Thank you. Yes. Trustee Robinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rice?
Yes.
Trustee Paul?
Yes.
Trustee Hicks?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Trustee Joyce?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
One other point. I guess I'm just happy to see that the purchase of technology is included as well, so as we communicate that in the forums, I think we should highlight that as well. Because I think they're used to saying the improvements of repairs to facilities, but also the purchase of the technology.
So that's a very good point, Trustee Rice. It was only authorized in the latest iteration of the sinking fund law that technology could actually be included in upcoming villages. And so previous villages that have been authorized before twenty-seventeen could not include technology. So that is an addition that we actually can make in the district.
Yes, go ahead. Thank you. And to that, but not out of order, just like to make sure that when it comes to hubbing our football facilities, that we make sure we indicate that they are state-of-the-art, you know, come one, come all, bring all your, your district A capacity playing skills to this fine field that we've just authorized to spend money on, so. Just not forget that. Thank you. Let's go on to item C, which is the report fifty-six thirty-six, if I can get a motion to open and approve that, the resolution of support school finance research collaborative, second reading.
Briefly, this second reading of the proposal, I'm just gonna read a few of the wheres and then the preamble, excuse me, and then the resolution. Whereas the School Finance Research Collaborative is a broad-based, diverse, and bipartisan group of business leaders and education experts from Metro Park to the metro to the Ever Peninsula, who agree it's time to determine the cost of student achievement for all students pre-K twelve, and then change how schools are funded. And whereas the School Finance Research Collaborative is supporting Michigan's first comprehensive school adequacy study, using multiple methodologies to determine the cost of educating a student. And whereas the School Research Finance Research Collaborative has hired the nation's top two school finance research firms to examine cost issues associated with key factors, including preschool, higher, special education, career technical education, English language learners, Ever students, and schools that are geographically isolated. And whereas adequacy studies have performed, have been performed in more than thirty other states over the past fifteen years, with ninety percent of them, now over ninety percent of the studies, using multiple methodologies as step one, considering any comprehensive school reform. And finally, whereas the School Research Finance Research Collaborative adequacy study is expected to be completed in early twenty-eighteen, and will provide lawmakers and the public with the best and most accurate and best available information on what it truly costs to educate all Michigan students. Therefore, it is resolved by the Board of Education of Southfield Public Schools, County of Oakland, Michigan, that Southfield Public Schools District supports the School Finance Research Collaborative and its efforts to determine the true cost of educating all Michigan public school students pre-K twelve. And I will add that our former superintendent, Monica Robinson, who is now the Oakland County ITC superintendent, is spearheading this work across the state, and it is groundbreaking in Michigan. And once we actually determine, we have four members of our, our school district who are participating in it, and once we determine the actual amount of cost to educate students in all of the classes that were actually referenced here, then we can be more equipped as advocates for school funding law and school funds for our district. And so that, that is why I just requested that you support the resolution.
I know that several board trustees attended at least two workshops that OCSBA put on, where they highlighted this at the beginning, and then they highlighted it again, I believe it was in the month of November. And each time, it was just fascinating to know how little work had been done prior, and how partisan it had been, and, you know, all those other kind of distinguishing factors. But with Bob Moore and Dr. Cook Robinson and all of the minds that are comprised of this, we may be able to make some headway as far as funding for schools in Michigan, which is mind-blowing. And so I'm glad that we are supporting this, I believe we are. And there's a video, it's like a two-minute, they have a two-minute and a five-minute, so maybe in the month of February, we could make sure that we share, even if we don't share it at the meeting, it could just be on our YouTube page or channel. Anything further about the school funding research collaborative? If not, I believe this is second reading and in need of approval. Please talk a little bit.
Yes.
Trustee Paul?
Yes.
Do we need a motion?
It's a really good night.
Yeah. Oh, it's me? Okay, sorry about that. Trustee Rice?
Yes.
Trustee Robinson?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Joyce?
Yes.
Please, I'm looking for a motion to open and approve report fifty-six thirty-seven, the football field renovation at Southfield High School, where yards of technology. Thank you. Move is supported. Any further dialogue, questions, considerations? I have questions.
I know several should have a number at the board retreat in terms of, I know several will share the number for the board retreat in terms of what's remaining from the capital improvement fund, if I'm saying it correctly. My concern is around the SAT group repairs and how much we've already allocated for that, and will we have enough left over to fix the remaining repairs that's required there? Can you kind of speak to that, be sort? I need that. Because I don't want to not have enough.
Yes, right. So, so coming before the board, we actually allocated one point one million dollars to the board from our, from our general fund to the capital projects fund, in addition to the one million dollars that you referred to from the seven channels. Right, and so we are not at the point yet where we're, we're expending that two, one point two, the two point one million dollars that is there. So we do have the resources available to actually repair the roof at Southfield A and T. We did receive a notification just before the break, that the portion that was above the pool that had been challenged for several years, for forty years' time, was approved for an insurance claim. And so they're gonna actually repair that one hundred and forty thousand dollar space, as well as the additional cost of the interior tiling for the pool, that was actually damaged because of the water coming through, because, you know, just have the roof issues, you actually have the interior spaces. And so that, that was allocated previously by the board, will not be used from the general, from the capital bridge projects fund, and that's the first piece that I will tell you. The remainder of the space, though, Mr. Toko will actually bring in, not only bringing forth the roof at Southfield A and T, but a long-range capital project fund projection for the next five years for all of our roofs, all of our HVAC and mechanical issues throughout the district, in all thirteen of our buildings, for the board to review on the, at the board retreat in January. And so we are not at all broaching up, running up against that number yet.
Okay, yeah. I'm glad you reminded us about the incremental amount added to that, so that eases my worry a little bit.
Just one question, and you may have said it already. When, when will the work be complete?
When we went through the process, the work has to be completed, that when we bid, when the job was bid, by, Kate can help me with that.
In putting together the RFP response for the football field, the intent was to have that work completed so that we would have the million dollars totally expended from the proceeds from channels, which is that requirement that we had. So that was.
April twentieth. April twentieth.
Yeah. So. Does the P track in field at all?
It should not. Yeah, it shouldn't. That's kind of what we looked at with it, so it wouldn't at all, because really the track is not going to be impacted, and the track won't be affected by the removal of the turf. Because I asked the same question, because we actually looked at the replacing the turf too, and the turf is actually in pretty good, I mean, the track is in pretty good shape. So it won't impact the track at all. And that was one of the biggest questions I asked, because when you take that turf off underneath it, that surface still comes over the track.
Thank you.
The track will be re-struck, though. Yes.
Well, that's probable. Trustee Hicks?
Yes.
Trustee Paul?
Yes.
Trustee Rice?
Yes.
Trustee Robinson?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Joyce?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Excellent, thank you. That takes us into information items. We've got four, so remember the letter A, B, C, and then make sure to include the metrics and accountability. I'm probably misspeaking, but you know what I mean. So, letter A is a resolution regarding firearms in public schools. That's the first reading. I believe there was some conversation about it at the nineteenth meeting, that I know we talked about some things in August. And I wasn't there for the nineteenth meeting to have any comment on it, but as I've shared with my colleagues on the board, that I'm torn, because I feel sometimes people like to make examples of organizations, and so I'm gonna be thinking very hard and long about my, my support of it, just in the sense of you're gonna give the folks who feel like the gun-free zone is a, is not a safe zone, and those people who are different sides of the conversation. So just wanted to make sure I let my, my thoughts be heard on that. So it's a first reading, so make sure to review it, and then it'll be brought back to us very shortly.
For president, just one comment on that.
Yes.
I don't know if I'm advocating either way, but I know Trustee Paul kind of brought up the Senate bill in one of our prior meetings of five eighty-four and five eighty-six. I just wanted to bring up that the Michigan PTA came out and opposed against it as well, and is urging folks to contact legislation, because they're looking at it either early this week or early next week.
Thank you. All right. Letter B is the Chromebook Carts at McIntyre Elementary School. And as you can see there, what the, the report has in here, if you have any questions. And again, this is informational. And again, this is informational. Oh, and that is letter C, the bill summary, number 819. And just noting number 1, 2, 3, payroll dispersments, accounts payable, and any wire payments that were made during that term of time. The total dispersment, totally $4.5 million. Ms. Rice, would you kind of lead us in this informational item in regards to your request?
Sure. There's only two points of matters. From our prior meeting on December 19th, one of the things that we talked about is having a legal review of the recommended policy changes. Today, as our deadline provided input and feedback, I'd like to see if the board has any objections for having that legal review at the board retreat. And then the second one is we've received input and feedback from several of the board members. And just like to see, are we complete there or are we expecting to have more input and feedback? Really, I think so, tonight in January 9th, our deadline.
I, I do, I really pondered over the metric that was included regarding first grade readiness. How is that going to be assessed? What, I guess with consideration of many factors, the fact that kindergarten is not mandatory. So, we're not playing with, even playing field in terms of holding administration accountable, teachers even accountable, when parents are not held accountable. So, how are we going to measure first grade readiness? So, I would like to see some consideration for removing that as a metric. Including what type of assessment is the committee considering in terms of even testing? We do the NWA and the other diagnostic testing for, that goes along with the reading law. But what other points of data are going to be collected to determine that type of readiness?
Just look at this or trusty, I'll see you guys.
So, I think, so my understanding of our conversation was that students, we were taught, we were going to measure students who actually were in Southfield Public Schools at C or in our kindergarten. For those, and those students, we could actually disaggregate, take out those students. Were not our students and were not kindergarten students for us. And therefore, those students would be pulled out of that. That's the first part of your question. The second part of your question, we actually talked about how we would figure that out collaboratively so that we would not, we would have multiple measures. So, NWA would be one. We would actually talk through what those measures are before we actually put that in place. Because remember, the metrics that we talked about would be playgrounders are baseline this year based upon our decision-making and what we choose as metrics. And then they would follow, they would move from year to year based upon that. So, that has yet to be determined. And that was my understanding of what we said in there.
Thank you. I just wanted to give Trustee Robinson an opportunity because I know that was one of the ones that she was really passionate about having on the list of parameters. So, right now, just kind of, as the board has set up parameter that we're looking to measure. But the specifics around it is something that we still need to have the dialogue around. So, that list is just to tell us what we will be measuring, not how we're going to measure. It's just the one right now that we need to move forward, so then move into the howl discussions. Which will include NWA, diagnostic, DNA, DRA, I should say, I'm sorry. Moving into science fiction.
And pulling out those students who are not kindergarten nurse.
Would we also pull out, or cap, inter-attended Smith?
So, part of that, that whole concept that you just had is just so illuminating to me and how we begin to think about that. Because you are correct that this is the same issue that we face in Pittsburgh. And so that's why I just jogged my memory that that was one of the things we worked on in the nonprofit that I worked with, getting children to school for kindergarten. So, attendance for K through 4 is not a kid issue, it's a parent issue. And so figuring out how to support parents bringing children to school, particularly around those Capri and given the K through reading law, has to be a part of an intensive support network. And so those measurements, so I, I'm with you there. I just don't know if we've had enough thought work around it yet to actually answer this question intelligently right now.
But we should point out that the installation of the student support network is one of the parameters that's on the accountability metric. So by installing that, in a pilot setup, it should get to providing services for someone who may have a transportation need, if that, you know, may be the issue.
And I just want to be clear, being everyone here knows I'm an early childhood person. So, it's not that I am opposed to having this. My concern comes in with the measurement piece of that, any accountability, if we don't, if, if the state doesn't even have all of the structures. I, I would like to see us maybe focus on the structure piece first before we look to hold someone accountable, provided, you know, however that looks in, you know, how those numbers look in the end. So, not opposed to the work, just want to make sure we're being cautious and considerate about looking at that and how we measure it.
I was just going to say the same thing. I know, I just saw a few emails over the grave just about, just thoughts, non, deliberative thoughts that people shared with regards to important areas for them. And I honestly didn't have a lot to add. Sometimes it takes folks a little more time for things to kind of sink in, but I'm on board with the pleasure of the 70 number body. Really supportive and thank you guys for the extra attention to it.
If there isn't any additional feedback, what we have so far, we'll bring forth at the board retreat.
Great.
It didn't sound like there were any objections to having a legal review. I see Mr. Phillips, did they?
No.
Any objection for you?
No, no ma'am.
I'm all for legal reviews. Thank you. All righty, and that leaves us at item 10, public participation. I echo my public participation comments from earlier in terms of if you wish to address the board. Are we doing the order? Anything anyone has before we, I entertain a motion for close?
Sure, I totally wish everyone a happy new year. And of course, applaud Anika Corbett and her team for the work that's being done with soliciting partners and our champions. Everything that's been shared, social media, when I see it, I share it. You know, really just encouraging our community members, you know, our parents, really getting engaged and involved. And I believe, don't quote me, but I believe we're still looking for celebrity readers, publicists. So, I think that's something that we're always doing. So, please check out our website. That's a real easy way to get involved with the Bussey Center. And I mean, all the other items that you listed as far as being a mentor. And so I just kudo you for that. So, I'm excited to see our new engagement and involvement.
Yonda, I don't see in the future meetings and events, a date selected for our evaluation of its entrance of attending. Did you forget that?
No.
Where is that?
I spoke about that with you. It's not an oversight. In fact, just in terms of that timeline, I mean, I think everybody was here on the 19th. So, I'm not sure if it was discussed on that date. But I, I believe, and it may have just been my thinking, that we were going to try to wrap it up by the middle of February. So, as far as dates specific, I don't have. But I know with regards to Ms. Cindy, Cindy Anson, and just coordinating schedules with that. But it, it won't be like something where you find out today that it's tomorrow. You'll have enough notice. On Friday this week, Ms. Christian, if I could schedule some time to chat with you to get, to make sure we know that now. Anything else further in the order for this January board appreciation, first meeting of the year, general session? If not, definitely echo everything that's been said. Just want everybody to definitely take time out on MLK Day and remember the reason for the season, if you will. And then just wishing safe travel to board members who are going to be traveling. I believe there's an advocacy institute before our next scheduled meeting. So, many of you will be advocating for us in Washington DC on different levels. And so we'll be sending good, good thoughts for you on your trips. Anything else before I ask for a motion on going into close? Here nothing. I'd like a, a motion to go into close to discuss labor legal, but in particular, to receive a written legal opinion and to discuss the negotiations.
So, move.
Support. Thank you. Madam Secretary, the rule, please. Trustee Robinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rice?
Yes.
Trustee Paul?
Yes.
Trustee Hicks?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
And then this? Thank you. We'll take a five-minute recess and then start our full session.